Dear. This is.
That's two thousand twenty-four, huh? Not this year.
Yeah, but it doesn't say it's a council member, just associates.
Oh, the vice mayor last year and this year?
How was it?
Last week?
Yeah. I'll call meeting order. We could all please rise with the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Christina, you have our role?
Yes.
With that. We will open the public hearing.
So this will be the second reading, second and final reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-five oh three and ordinance of mining chapter six, Lakeview Cemetery in the city code. As the councils understood on the work session on the eighteenth, I made a full. Read the ordinance into the record in its entirety, all six pages. There's been no public comment to the city. There was no public comment on. Uh, August eighteenth, I don't want to read all six pages again because nothing's changed, so. Max, if you don't have a problem with it, I'd just like to go forward with questions at this point.
I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Maybe.
Since we have. Pardon me?
Maybe the legal description.
Oh, stop. You guys want to go to the football game, not me. I could drag this out if you want.
We can, we can all rewind it and watch it again.
Yeah.
If there's no members of the public here to ask questions essentially.
Well, that's what we're gonna find out, if there's any members of the public that have any questions. Any questions from the public? Third time, any questions? I see no questions, Christina, so. Nick, would you like to make a motion?
Motion to pause the public hearing and open up the agendas.
For the regular meeting.
Regular meeting.
Thank you. I'll second that. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? And none? Uh, back to the regular meeting. And with that, can I get approval of this evening's agenda?
And move, we approve the this evening's agenda. Second down.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And none, motion carries. Uh, all items listed under consent agenda will be proved in one council motion unless there's something we need to remove for further discussion.
Nothing on this side of the table.
Well, we can't have that, I'll, I'd like to remove item H.
Okay.
Uh, with that, I would, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item H.
One second, man.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Item H. I was present.
You're not noted?
I'm not noted.
Oh, my goodness.
That proves I read the minutes.
Look at that.
Look at, look at that.
We will make the change.
Noted. Uh, I now make a motion to approve item H from the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
You're on.
You were worried.
No. Too many pages, you guys. Uh, please repeat first and second.
I made the motion first.
Okay.
I second.
And Ron second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing done, the consent agenda is passed.
Okay.
Then we will move to our financial audit presentation.
Can't work. For who?
Sounds good. Well, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor, Council for allowing us some time tonight to go through the audit results for the December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four audit. My name is Chris Melpik, I'm a principal with Clifton Larson Allen, and I have Troy Gableer, who was the manager on the city's audit with me tonight. To go through a, a presentation that we have that kind of outlines the actual audit results as long as well as several slides on some of the financial results for the city as well, so. Typically Troy and I, we like to do this fairly informally, if there's questions from the council as we go, feel free. You know, raise your hand, wave, throw something at us, get our attention somehow, we'll be more than happy to stop and answer questions as we go. Uh, so as we go, we'll go through, as I mentioned, some required communications, some audit results, which will be both, uh, the actual audit results for the city, like what kind of opinion you've got, those types of things as well as financial. We'll go through what we call kind of emergency issues, which are really just some upcoming, uh, accounting standards that are going to be impacting the city for over the next year or two. And then, as we mentioned, some financial results as well. So as we go through this required communications, this is the, uh, basically a, a couple of slide summary of an actual letter that the entire council received, so I'm hitting just the highlights of that letter. The first one is really just that reminder that an audit provides reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance as to the results of your, in your financial statements. The reason it's reasonable assurance is we use a risk-based audit approach. And that means what we do through internal discussions amongst us on the team, talking to city staff, a member of the council typically. We kind of come up with what's the risk profile for the city, and that way we can really focus our auditing processes and procedures around the riskiest areas for a city. Not saying that we turn a blind eye to everything else, it's just not a primary focus if it's a small, small account balance or something like that. In order to get absolute assurance, that means we audited one hundred percent of your transactions, and that's just not feasible, so. That's why we get to what we say reasonable assurance. We also do look at your accounting estimates for the city, so accounting estimates are going to be like the useful lives of your capital assets, your receivables that you have in water and sewer and things like that, are you going to actually collect those types of receivables? Our responsibility for those estimates is make sure they're reasonable and they're supported and there's no bias in them, so you're not artificially trying to increase revenues or increase expenses or, or something along those lines. We also adopted two new accounting standards this year, so within our presentation, you're going to see that acronym GASB. GASB stands for governmental accounting standard for it, so that's the standards that's governments are required to follow when it comes to accounting and how you recognize transactions, so. The first one we adopted this year was statement number one hundred. And that one really is a, um, primarily a no disclosure type of statement where it just changes how we, um, disclose if there is a restatement within your financial statement, so that did impact the city this year, as you'll see on the, on the future slide, we did have a couple of restatements this year. Um, so it just kind of walks through and makes the readers just have more background as to what caused the restatement and those types of things. The next one, statement one oh one related to compensated absences. Compensated absences for us are going to be your accrued vacation leave, sick leave, compensated time. Earned, safe and sick time falls into that category now. In statement one oh one impacted how we record that liability for the city. The previous standard that, uh, governments followed was statement number sixteen, that was over thirty years ago now. Between now and thirty years ago, there's different types of leaves that governments have access to, think like the earned, safe and sick time is the easiest one to kind of point to the finger to. So this just impacted what we have to record for that liability now, so ultimately what that really meant for the city is there was a slight increase in your accrued vacation and sick leave liability this year, it wasn't a significant impact, if it was material, we would have had to restate for that liability, but there wasn't, so we just adjust that through current year. And then also just want to let you know that we received the full cooperation from everybody that we work with at the city. Christine, I know this year, um, working with us for the first time ever, after having worked with your prior auditors for several years, it, it was a learning curve, you know, both on our side, getting to know the city. And also, uh, working with Christine to, to provide all of the requests that we have, especially for a first year audit, getting understanding what's the process, what's the internal controls look like, who, what's the approval process on checks and receipts and all of those types of things, so. I think it was a learning curve on both sides, just getting to know the city and Christine, I'm hoping you learn some on the, on the other side too, as far as what, what we're looking for in some of the audit stuff, so. As far as the actual audit results go now, at the end of the day, the city received an unmodified or a clean audit opinion, unmodified is the opinion you want to see in your financial statements. If it was something other than that, you'd see it talking about an adverse opinion or a disclaimer of opinion. You have an unmodified or that clean out opinion, so very good on that. We also look at your internal controls as part of our audit. We are not, um, we're not engaged to provide an opinion on your internal controls, our responsibility is to let you know if we identify deficiencies as part of our audit process, that's our responsibility as your audit. You can see this year, we have six different bullet points that fall under those internal control comments. The first one really segregation of duties, what that means is with the small number of staff that the city has, it's basically impossible to properly segregate all of the different transaction sites, so if you think about when it comes to receiving money and or dispersing money. Um, typically for most of those, it requires a minimum of three individuals involved in all of those different things, it's just not possible in smaller organizations, very common. Really what that means for the city council, just make sure that you're doing your due diligence as an elected official. You're looking at those check registers, questioning stuff, whatever, something that looks out of place or out of ordinary, something like that, so that's really what we kind of lay out in there. The next one, what we have this year on that one is just a lack of a formal review process when it comes to bank reconciliations and journal entries. They're getting properly reconciled, it's just, there should be a formal review process in place, so as auditors, we want to see initials and a date when something's reviewed. So that's the type of stuff that we want to see, just making sure there's a formal process in place. The third one down there, audit adjustments, so this is, uh, something that in the past, uh, I think your prior auditors have also helped with some of these. But really what it's coming down to is we had to help adjust the books at the end of the year to get ready for the audit, so you got the clean version of the financial statements in front of you. This year it was helping with, um, grossing up some of your, your debt issuance costs that were out there this year. Making sure transfers were booked in the proper year and, and everything like that this year, recording capital asset additions, so your fixed assets when you purchase new equipment or golf carts, this last year, there was a cat, I think there was a pumper truck that was purchased, those types of things, making sure they're being properly recorded this year. As I mentioned on the previous slide, we did have two restatements this year in your financial statements. The first one was related to some of the inter-fund loans that the city has, so you have several loans that go from uh, typically the general fund over to like the golf course and some of those types of funds. Uh, in governmental accounting, those should stay as a fun level type of receivable and payable. Um, your prior auditors had the, the liability side of that recorded as just governmental, government-wide, so it wasn't in the proper spot, so we had to do a restatement to move it back to the correct spot, so. Um, didn't change the numbers at the end of the day, just kind of where it shows up initially, so just cleaned up the accounting related to that. The second one that we had was related to the housing redevelopment fund. Last year, that was actually reported as a custodial fund, which, um, when we got the, the bylaws and the governing documents for that. We, we concluded that should actually be reported as a special revenue fund, so it actually comes within the operations of the city. So we had to do a restatement to move that into the proper spot as well, so. Um, those were kind of the two restatements that we had this year. Um, the next one that we had, we had, um, at the end of the day, the city is responsible for the fire relief pension. So the city has, you're kind of seen as the employer sponsor for fire relief pension, so. In your financial statements, statements, you'll either see a net pension asset or a net pension liability related to your fire relief association and their um, defined benefit plan that they have, so. When it comes to that, um, that liability is based off of, uh, what we call census data, so making sure that the proper records are maintained to show how old somebody is, when they were. Um, you know, it's, it's age, it's, you know, what sex they are, um, what, uh, how long they were, part of the relief association, all kind of just that background information. There's not a lot of great records related to that, so. The actuary that the city uses for generating that liability, kind of just rolls that forward each time you need a new valuation. And then they just kind of add on the new relief association members when there are some, so, but really at the end of the day, the city should have records for all of that on, on file. And then last one, we call it just oversight of the financial reporting process, really what that is a fancy way of saying is that we drafted the financial statements for you, so. Um, your prior auditors did that, we're continuing to do that, we're just required to include it as a, as an internal control comment, so. Any questions related to the internal control comments at all before I move on?
No.
Okay, sounds good. And then the last one on this slide here before I turn it over to Troy, looking at the um, Minnesota legal compliance, so us as your external auditors, we have to look at the Minnesota legal compliance guide that is published annually by the Office of the State Auditor here in Minnesota. It covers seven different categories, anything from contracting and bidding to dispersing funds to conflicts of interest, issuing debt, there's seven different categories that that fall into. This year we had, um, comments related to your contracting and bidding. What that came down to is there was, um, one of the items that we pulled that fell into that category of, for Minnesota statutes between twenty-five and one set hundred and seventy-five thousand. It was for the, the cat that the city purchased last year. In that category, you're supposed to get at least two quotes for all purchases, and there's only one that we could identify for that purchase, so. Just that reminder that you should have at least two quotes for all those in that category. And then the other one, the second one on there is there were no sealed bids for one of the contracts over one seventy-five. What that?
That sounded just for some, what was that amount again?
A hundred and seventy-five thousand?
The verb to get to.
Oh, the quote, it was between twenty-five thousand and a hundred and seventy-five.
Thank you.
Yep. Then the last one for, um, if any purchases are over a hundred and seventy-five thousand, you should have sealed bids for that, for those bids. Or for those contracts, and that one was the pumper truck.
Yep.
So you're required by statute to have sealed bids for that, unless you can actually go through the process and saw and say it's a, um, basically it's such a unique purchase, you can only buy it from one entity that's out there. Unfortunately, fire trucks and pumper trucks and those types of things don't fall into that category.
And that happened in twenty-three as well.
Correct.
Yeah. We discussed that with fire.
Yep, so very, it's, you know, nothing out of the ordinary on that, sometimes it is hard to get quotes, especially when you're in that twenty-five to a hundred and seventy-five thousand. But you're supposed to do everything, make a good faith effort, document that you've attempted to get quotes, even if it's something as easy or simple as you emailed X number of vendors and no, nobody replied, or they all replied saying no thanks, not able to do a quote. Something like that to show that you provided some type of a good faith effort to get those quotes, so. Um, with that, any questions on that, otherwise I'll turn it over to Troy to go through some financial results. Okay.
You can. Thank you. Um, also too, for that, uh, the, those thresholds for twenty-five thousand one seventy-five, that really only is looking at like equipment purchases or construction type stuff too. Um, so it doesn't necessarily fall for anything that you purchase for the city. Um, sometimes I think that's helpful too. Beware of that. All right, so financial results. Um, so this is showing the general fund, um, this dark blue bar is essentially showing your unassigned fund balance. Um, and what that's representing is at the end of the year, how much money is left over um, for kind of unforeseen circumstances, um, or for the city to kind of navigate the next year with, uh, if you weren't to take in any money, um, or if you were to ever have a, uh, kind of a timing difference in when you're expecting to get things for a budget, uh, versus when you receive the money. And then that light blue line is just showing your fund balance as a percent of the annual expenditures. Um, so you can see that that has, um, gone up over the past four years. Um, that's a good trend to see, that is going to keep the city from having to necessarily, um, maybe take out extra, uh, debt bonds, that sort of thing, when you have higher interest rates, that's, that can be a very good thing for, um, fiscally for this city.
And, and for that, the state auditor's office, they typically recommend for cities that are dependent on property taxes, which most most municipalities are in Minnesota, you should try to aim for a minimum of fifty percent. The, the idea behind that is fifty percent gets you to your first tax settlement in typically late June from the county. So that's where that idea of where you should try to aim for at least fifty percent fund balance in your general.
Um, and so, and that, and you can see it's ticked up over that last two years, so that's great, that's a healthy fund balance, that's what you'd want to see in your general fund. Uh, here we just have the general fund revenues, uh, this is just a four-year trend, um, I think here, of course, property taxes are going to increase as you increase, you know, the property values, potentially the rates. Um, the intergovernmental is kind of the one I'm going to highlight, where you kind of see where it goes from yellow to red, it kind of dips down, that's really just from the change in um, federal funding, uh, there's a little bit less federal funding in two thousand twenty-four than there was in the past. Um, the slight change in the fire state aid, um, and then all other revenues is pretty, um, minor there, but if you did kind of note that that's just kind of the fines, reimbursements, donations, rental and things like that. Um, but here you're kind of seeing the trends you'd expect to see maybe other than that intergovernmental. All right, here we have the expenditures, a very similar, um, graph showing the different buckets there. Uh, you know, the majority for a city, a lot of this is going to be really, um, payroll related. Um, the one item with public safety where you kind of see that dipping down, it's not necessarily that the city spent less on public safety. Uh, it's that you can see the capital outlay, um, kind of on the right there increased, uh, so the cameras and squad cars and things like that roll through capital outlay. Um, so the spending actually was probably pretty in line with what you'd expect in total, but we have to break it out into capital outlay for the accounting standards. All right. Then here we have the golf fund results, um, so the golf fund is a special revenue fund um, of the city, and that's something that the city provides to the residents, so it's not a fund that is set up or intended to necessarily create a bunch of money. Um, such as like an enterprise fund would be. Um, here you can kind of see where the expenditures slightly exceed revenues, um, if you're looking kind of on average the last four years. And that yellow bar is kind of showing the, um, fund balance of that fund, now there are inter-fund loans, I believe, with this and other funds, to make sure that the funding for the things that needs operating is there. Um, but just given that that's trended that way, you may want to look at doing a permanent transfer unless you think the golf fund is going to start making money, and that wouldn't be uncommon to see in golf funds in Minnesota when they're run as special revenue funds. Oftentimes, at some point, they'll just be done with the advances, they'll do a transfer from the general fund, and they'll do that each year, um, because ultimately that's something that you're providing to your community. Right? Revolving loan funds, I think this one is very interesting to look at, you can kind of see how the cash balance ticks up over the last four years. Uh, while the receivable balance goes down as, uh, you know, the different entities you're lending money to owe less money and are paying that regularly. Um, but the fund balance has really stayed very consistent. Um, and the nice thing here is now you're positioned really well to potentially make more loans, um, than you have in the last few years. I know Christina was saying that they're bored for that, looking at doing some of that as well, so. Um, that's great, what you don't want to see is the receivable balance staying stagnant or going up, if you, you know, obviously you make loans, there's a little risk there. Um, you cannot get paid back, so that's great, you're obviously making good decisions in terms of getting the money back, so. Then fire department special equipment fund results, um, here you just, uh, the main highlight here is that you are building up fund balance there, um, fire department equipment's not cheap. Uh, right, oftentimes if you don't put money aside for that, when you do have to make purchases, the general fund ends up subsidizing that. Um, so in this fund, you'd have plenty of funding set aside for that type of equipment, um, to kind of serve the community there.
So since all of that comes from, or quite a bit of it comes from the outline townships, is that accounted differently then?
Your special equi- equipment fund results has been growing because the fire relief makes me, uh, that you're in donation, that's where that, um, increases on.
Good.
Has come from directly, there's, there's the truck fund and then there's the special equipment fund, there are two different ones.
Yeah. All right, and then I'm going to go into some of the enterprise funds, um, so here we're really going to look at some of the operating income and losses, uh, we also have a few different ways to show this, like kind of back out um, depreciation expense and some of our other items, which I'll show you, this is just in total, the operating income or loss. Um, so you can see the water and sewer funds, um, kind of a steady tick down over the last few years. Um, along with the liquor store, um, trending that way, so just something to kind of pay attention to and watch, I'll get to another slide where you can see the fund balance of both the water and sewer fund are quite healthy. Um, but obviously you want to take that into account as you determine rates year to year, obviously nobody likes when you raise rates, but you also don't want to get to the point where you have uh, sometimes we see communities that don't do it for quite a while, and then all of a sudden they'll have like twenty percent increases, that we get really mad then. Um, so I know you guys typically do raise it from year to year, um, just something to watch. Here I have that without depreciation, obviously depreciation isn't a cash transaction. Um, so here you can see then the, uh, water and sewer fund is just under zero there. Um, with the liquor fund is quite a bit lower, now the reason for, um, that being so low, I do want to point out, it would have actually generated cash if you just looked at it from a cash standpoint, I think about twenty grand. This year we had to book or we allocated the other post-employment benefits, so the benefits people get when they retire, uh, they still get like health or dental um, insurance through the city. That wasn't allocated to the enterprise funds, but you have employees working within them, then Wall and Vine were likely receiving those benefits when they retire. So it was allocated differently this year. Um, that being technically an estimate in terms of how you allocate that um, isn't something that we can just restate the prior year for, uh, we were going to go that route, um, to try to not have as big of an expense. Um, but really it is just an allocation of a correct liability last year. Um, and so ultimately that will be a one-time expense, other than that, it'll just be the change that'll hit those funds, and so you won't see that big of a change year to year um, with, uh, other post-employment benefit plan liability, so.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
Since I'm the operation manager for liquor.
Absolutely.
Um, when you, when you're presenting this financial statement, someone with the loss of twenty thousand dollars, um, that's not taking, of course, in account that their response transferred to other accounts.
Correct, we are just looking at the, in the end, but part of it, actually it generated income, if you, that's what I was trying to point out is um, the liquor fund generates money for the city, it's just us booking and reapplying the other post-employment benefit liability and how the depreciation why that looks that way, and so I'm trying to highlight that I think that that does make more money than your operating income this particular year is going to show. Um, and so we recognize that, and that's why I'm trying, and so I have, here's without OPEP. And you can see without the OPEP expense, and this does increase, include depreciation. Um, it's making twenty thousand dollars just after we back out OPEP, because we, that was a hundred and seventy thousand dollars um, of the liability that went there, just because you have the, a little bit more of the payroll expense going to that fund, so. Um, that's something that you shouldn't expect to see each year, uh, it'll just be the changes that liability changes, the only other time you'd likely see a big jump there is if you were to hire a bunch of employees or full-time people that would apply, which isn't likely. Um, or if you were to really change what you're offering as other post-employment benefits. Um, otherwise it'll probably be small changes like five to ten grand year to year for each fund after that, so.
Okay.
Um, and that really what that came from is it was booked last year just on the government-wide statements. Um, and wasn't allocated to the enterprise funds, and then this year, it's allocated based on where the folks are working, um, so if they're working more in the general fund, or I think they're revolving loan, if anyone put time towards that, that's still on the government-wide, but anybody working on water, sewer, or liquor, uh, then we put the liability there.
And we have the most employees.
They have the most employees, so you get the biggest, biggest hit for that, um, and we did. Um, and we did also send a note to the state explaining that, um, and then you'll have access to this to also show.
That was one of my concerns, Shonda, is the, if any negatives that the liquor store may have. Right, after a year, and I, I mentioned that to their.
We get a, we get a report card, um, that shows, you know. Like ranks you as a city and ranks you and how much and, and, you know, in the past, we've, we've. You know, it, it was said that we transferred, you know, let's say sixty-five thousand dollars to general fund, but then we also transferred. Money to other funds, and that wasn't, you know, like, is it, is it, are you doing your share as municipal liquor store? That's, that's, I just want, I mean.
You want the state to know that?
Yes.
Yes, yep, and so, and so we did, and we did communicate with the state about that. Um, we do think it's proper for that liability to be reflected there, uh, but that doesn't change the fact that that's a massive change for one year. And, yeah, I mean, you'd have had to have over a couple hundred thousand dollars, um, in additional revenue for that not to go negative then this year, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then, here we just have all the enterprise funds, through the unrestricted kind of spendable net position. Uh, you can see the water and sewer fund, um, kind of slightly ticking down there. Um, that's not super uncommon to see, you just gotta watch that over the years, uh, you click, you don't want those ones to get too low just because of the reinvestments you have in some of those capital assets now and again. Um, liquor fund, uh, that one's just under zero, but again, a lot of that's due to the liability being added to the funds. Um, and the transfers that they make year to year to not build up that fund balance. Right, um, and then here we just have it displayed a little bit differently, I think this is kind of nice to just see the operating revenues compared to expenses each year of the different funds. Um, and then that yellow line is showing your operating income or loss, and then the red line is really showing your operating, uh, your income before depreciation. Um, so if you're backing out some of those depreciation costs. Um, so we have that for the water fund, uh, the sewer fund, and we also have that for the liquor store fund. Alright. Um, and then this, this one as well is just showing the cash investment balances by fund type, uh, so really this is just included to show you that the. Where the city has their cash, um, and investments from year to year, you know, ratio kind of percentage-wise isn't really changing. Uh, it's pretty consistent, so when revenue's down for the whole city for the year, and the cash investments. Um, isn't really changing by fund, uh, which means you're probably spending and. Um, paying money out of the funds that are receiving their revenue in a similar, um, like basically to what you're budgeting, so. And then this shows a budget to actual, uh, that dark blue line is, uh, your budget, and light blue is the actual. I think the highlights here is if you look at the general fund, that, right, like while the expenditures were higher than, uh, budgeted, so were the revenues, right? Um, and that makes sense, right, so if you ended up receiving more money, it makes sense that you'd end up having some more money, um, to expend for whatever that was for. Um, and you see something similar with the liquor store fund, right, where while expenses are higher, the revenues are also quite a bit higher than was budgeted, so. Um, and in that case, that would also include, include the OPEB expense, and if you were to back that out. The increase in revenues is going to be greater than the increase in expenditures was in comparison to budget as well. Thanks, so I'm gonna turn it back, do you have any questions on any of the graphs, or some of that? Otherwise I'll turn it over to Chris to talk about coming gatherings.
All good, thanks, great. In this last slide, really just wanted to update the council on, uh, three new accounting standards that are gonna be applicable over the next two years. The, the nice part is that first one, statement number one oh two, that's actually gonna be a fairly easy one. We've had a lot of new standards over the last couple of years, from lease accounting to. Subscription IT accounting into anything and everything, so this, um, statement number one oh two is actually going to be a statement that is just no disclosure only. So, what that standard wants us to do, um, or wants local governments to do. Is to include a disclosure more about what the regulatory environment is that you operate in every municipality in Minnesota. So, the easiest one to point to that is all municipalities in Minnesota have a legal debt limit. We will now include that as a note disclosure next year, it's three percent of your estimated market value, that's just gonna be a note disclosure, it's gonna be those types of. Things, so the readers have a better picture as far as what's the environment you actually operate in as a city in Minnesota. Um, another one is if there's union agreements in place, are those, union agreements, are they, um. Are they still under contract, or is there a specific bargaining unit outside a contract, or a strike may impact operations at the city? Those types of things are what they want us to disclose going forward. Statement number one oh three, uh, this is the first of two standards that are gonna be impacting the financial statements over the next. Probably half dozen years. That one's gonna be applicable, um, statement one oh three is gonna be applicable on December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. The next standard, why I say the first of two, the next standard's not even issued yet, so you're still talking at this point, four, five, six years down the road for that one year. Um, this first one, what this is really going to do is it's going to, the biggest impact for the city is it's going to. Um, force us to kind of rewrite the management discussion and analysis, so the very first section of your financial statements called the management discussion and analysis. Uh, that currently is based on statement number thirty-four. So, statement number one oh three is basically gonna rewrite that. The nice part about that is a lot of those become very, if you want to say canned language. So we'll have lots of examples to be able to help Christina with that as when we get there, so that hopefully minimizes the impact on that. There are going to be some new, um, a new category within your enterprise funds under one oh three as well. Um, it's gonna have us break out a, what they call a non-capital subsidy. So the easiest example of a non-capital subsidy to give you is. Um, we work with a few communities where they actually have to, um, allocate some of their tax levy over to their enterprise funds. That would be a non-capital subs, because it's there just to keep the. Keep the operations going, designed to decrease the impact on the users by keeping rates lower or whatever that may be. So it's gonna have us break that up, shouldn't be a big impact for the city, but that's something that'll be new if we have to, if you ever had to levy for. Operations in your water.
We did it for the golf course a couple of years ago, but that was stopped.
Yep, yeah, so that'll be out there, and then number one oh four is actually going to be another easy one where it's really, um. It's just impacting disclosures of capital assets, so. This statement is really just the culmination of probably the five different statements, so. We had lease accounting, subscription IT accounting, we had something called public-private partnerships. We had all different types of things like that, those created what they call right-to-use assets, so you have the right to use. That copy machine, or you have the right to use that subscription for Microsoft or something like that. The standards that created those assets, they basically said you had to disclose them. They didn't tell you how to disclose, so statement one oh four is just gonna get these all into the same format, so all local governments across the country. Report those assets in the same manner, so.
So basically, the work that we've already been doing for like lease and IT.
Yep.
Will just get polished up a little bit.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, it's not gonna change how the values were calculated, it's just cleaning up how they're disclosed in the statements going forward.
Understood.
Yep, so it'll be a pretty easy one.
Cause I've already got the information.
Yep, exactly.
Add anything else.
Yep, so you have all of them.
I know, I know you're giving this presentation to us, and I'm looking at Christina every once in a while, I'm going, oh boy, but, yeah.
That's, um, the, the, the Gatsby board has been very active over the last decade. You know, this, this whole concept of lease accounting, and we call them SABIS, or subscription-based IT arrangements. Public-private partnerships, and then you get into one oh three, which, you know, I was kind of joking, put air quotes out there, you know. Financial model reporting improvements, you know, that's. Kind of, you know, depends on who's reading that, whether it's really an improvement or not, we won't get into that tonight, but.
The fact that they hit over a hundred this year.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're kind of nerds in governmental accounting, so we have a little party when we hit a hundred, you know, something like that.
I remember starting in the eighties, you know, now we're twenty up there.
Yep, I, when I first started doing government auditing, they had just issued thirty. And that was a little over twenty years. So we've had almost, basically seventy standards in the last twenty-one to twenty-two years. It's been a lot, it's been a lot for individuals, and you think about somebody in, in Christina's spot where. You're wearing multiple hats here, you're wearing, you know, administrator, clerk, HR, IT, anything and everything, and. To now add in all of these standards, there's a lot to keep up with, and especially at smaller communities. You know, it's not like we're sitting here with even Beltrami County, or. Pick a big county towards the metro where they have finance departments that are ten, twenty, thirty, forty people. And they can do these with, you know, they just devote somebody to that to do it for the next six months and they're done, that doesn't happen in small communities, so it's. It's a lot to do, and I give Christina credit for taking on all of this and keeping up with all of the standards as well. With that, that concludes our presentation, we're open to any other questions that anybody on the council may have.
No, I just have a curiosity question, how many, approximately how many municipalities do you provide the service for, that you're providing those?
We, across Minnesota, we audit, so Minnesota CLA, so low background CLA. Is the, in two thousand twelve, we merged, it was Larson Allen, who is Minnesota-based, we merged with a firm out of Milwaukee called Clifton-Gunderson. So that gets us to CLA now. Um, each of us as firms have been around for about sixty-plus years now. And we have worked with local governments in Minnesota, we have thirteen different offices in Minnesota. Anywhere from, um, Alexandria, Brainerd, St. Claude, Buffalo, Minneapolis, um, New Ulm. Austin, Mankato, Rochester. I miss one, so, oh, oh, we're talking, and a few more. So, we, Troy and I, we work with, um, annually, we work with probably just the two of us, we probably work with about fifteen or twenty different cities. Across all of our offices in Minnesota, we audit. I wanna say thirty-two of the eighty-seven counties in Minnesota, so we audit, um. Over a third of the counties in Minnesota, and we audit probably another forty or fifty cities. We also audit probably about fifty or sixty school businesses, and then you start adding in all of the other related entities like. HRAs that get their own audits, EDAs that get their own audits, joint powers, all of those types of things, so across Minnesota, we're probably pushing. Somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred plus governmental audits we work with every year.
It's been a fun ride. And I'm like exhausted and happy that twenty-four is done, and I'm already looking towards twenty-five.
Yeah, and we, and we also have a meeting set up with Christine in October to go over some of the different things, um, now that we kind of have a good starting point. Um, and we're aware that we were asking for and working with Christine in a new way, if we're new auditors, um, and. You know, it did appear that a lot of cases, you know, you see some of the restatements, some of that. Um, work was being done, and a lot of the accounting was being done, you know, by the auditor on behalf of the city. And we can also help with some of that, but we have to be careful about that to make sure that we're independent. And Christina has everything she needs, um, to be able to review and approve anything that we're changing. And hopefully all good changes. Other than, I'm sure she doesn't like the OPEB of the liquor store, that's.
No, that scared me.
Yeah.
I'm like, Sean's gonna have a question, I can just tell you, we can't go negative, we don't want to do that, that's a big blinky light for the public.
And it, and it too, if you do get another question or something from, um, the state, well, it doesn't change that, we're happy to, um, be part of that discussion too.
Appreciate it.
It's not like the operations created the issue, it's just a better allocation of a liability that should have been on there. And we could even provide them, had it been on there, what would that have expense been, and I bet it's not anywhere near that.
I got you.
Anything else? Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you very much. Well, thanks for allowing us to serve you.
Right, moving on, I'm fine, Black Duck Forum, is there anyone for the Black Duck Forum? Seeing none. We'll move to reports of committees and staff. Mike, that means you.
Uh, not a whole lot, I'm actually gonna push my, uh, my stuff with the lift stations back to the work section, I think that's a better fit. For all the stuff we need to talk about.
Okay.
With upgrades, so other than that, I'm trying to wrap stuff up, get ready for, we're, you're in winter, you're just, excuse me.
You mean the one out at the golf course, the, that one?
No, 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 I'm talking, uh, the Black Mallard West End Main Lift Station updates that we briefly discussed. Now, the golf course, I can comment on that one quickly, um. That pump is currently being built, and will ship on the twelfth, I believe it is. Pretty much the minute that our, uh, our pump company gets it, they're coming up and starting to put that in and the panel and everything. And then that'll all be updated and good to go, and hopefully good for another thirty-plus years, or at least until I'm done. That's about all I got for you guys, if any big concerns, so.
Okay. Questions for Mike? We'll move on to, uh, Shonda.
I don't, um, I don't have a lot, uh, we have reduced our kitchen hours. Some of the days of the week, as we are, um, very short-staffed in the kitchen. I have been doing interviewing, um, and reaching out to people, um. So, and until we get another one or two staff members that are this. Shortening the kitchen open hours.
And what are the kitchen open hours now?
Well, Thursday and Friday, we, we still open till nine, um, just because of availability and, um. We have our meat rack is on Thursday, so we're encouraging them to come, so I figured that that would be. Um, and then the rest of the week is just till seven.
Not present, do you have something for her?
Yeah, um, the council needs to approve the payment option for the, um, Toro Reels Master. Um, from MTI, I've provided the invoice, um, the discussion summary from the work session, and. Um, just wanted to recap from the revolving loan fund committee and our friends at CLA that, uh, the. Approved or recommended. Payment option would be to, uh, uh. Sorry, I'm reading my notes.
Do, yeah, or just from the paper?
To paper it out of the, uh, general fund reserve. Yes, um, and not do a direct transfer to the golf course since, um, its cash balance is already negative, so. That, um, your committee, your, um, our left committee is making that recommendation, CLA. Uh, sees that as a better path to go for, so what I'm asking for the council is to approve it in that fashion tonight.
And we need, uh, do you want that amount in the motion?
Yep.
Yeah. Twenty thirteen Toro Reels Master invoice for fourteen thousand, which I believe you said is to be transferred from the general fund.
Uh, no, you pay it out of the general fund reserves.
Pay it out of the general fund reserved, which has been recommended and approved by the golf board. About a second. I'll second that. Any discussion? All was in favor? I, I always, very none, most are pities. Library.
The renovations are still going forward, um. I heard from our contractor today that, uh, the. I heard from our contractor today that uh the relamp actually started today. The uh lighting came in and uh Bussler Electric um started uh doing the lighting today. So I have no idea what stage they're in, I just received notice from um Gunderson this morning. Um. He and I met last week sometime. Worked through some ideas for the cabinetry that the reception area is going to need, the flooring. Uh, paint samples of that nature, so he can get some uh dollar amounts so that we can work inside our budget. I haven't heard back as to what those amounts are at yet. Um, tonight, what I need council approval on is the State of Minnesota Grant Contract Agreement. Um, for that multi-purpose community facility project through the Board of Education. So that I can move forward with um the funding, the additional funding for the library, so I need approval on this grant agreement, please.
Don, you wanna make that motion?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the State of Minnesota Grant Contract Agreement.
Oh, a motion and a second, is there any discussion on this? All who's in favor? I, opposed. Very none, motion carries. On to you, Christina. Which?
Second Diana for to speak on it, behalf from the Nann Foundation to the.
I was informed that there there are maybe is some money available, will use in different projects in the Monday. Through the council, and I guess I'm here to ask if you would be interested in helping us. Uh, first of all, who we are, uh Diane, my wife and I. Uh, I started here in nineteen seventy, she was in nineteen seventy-eight, uh, we taught our entire year, uh, teaching careers here. Raised our two children here. Um, my son moved away and is located in the cities, my daughter is still in the community. Married to the person who took my job up at school. And she is also just recently and uh elected to the school board. So as you can see, our family is very invested in this community, has been for many years. And working with youth. And uh, my son, yeah, one son. And our son. Who passed away two years ago. And we started a foundation in his name, Madden McKean Foundation. And what we do is we try to raise money and invest it back into the youth of the community. Both down in Farmington, where my son still lives. And the way we raise this money is we hold golf tournaments, we have one down there and we also have one here coming up this Saturday. And typical golf tournament, if you're familiar with it, you get sponsors for holes and so and so forth, trying to raise money. All the money we raise, other than any expenses that we do have. Uh, we put back into, we started out just with the idea of sponsoring uh scholarships for graduating seniors. And both of our tournaments have been fairly successful, so we have enough some money, so now we are. Looking for other ways of doing it, and example of the softball team went down to the state tournament, we gave them money for their trip down there. Football team was asking for money last year uh for equipment and so on, and again, things like that. That we tried to reinvest back into the youth. Um, all the way from elementary uh to graduation. Here in Black Duck, the money we raise in Black Duck stays in Black Duck, the money we raise down there stays on. Uh, we, in the two years we've uh informed, we've put about eight thousand dollars back into either. Graduating seniors or some of the other things we've started to branch out into now. And we plan on then continuing that. Uh, the support has been outstanding. Uh, again, this year, we're gonna have, and that's seventy-five type full sponsors, which is. So I kind of unbelievable on the amount of support we get. And somebody told me that this money was available, and I guess. I don't even know what to ask for, whatever, maybe we just ask for a sponsorship. You know, our sponsorship uh or somebody would like, uh, would be a goal sponsorship. Which is a three hundred dollar sponsorship, and but we would be more than happy to get more. I don't know what to ask. Um. I think that's.
How uh, how big are the scholarships that you're giving out?
Thousand dollars each.
Thousand dollars?
We gave out one last year, we only had one applicant, we gave out four this year, we only had four applicants. Uh, we're hoping that as we're we're getting a little bit better known, that we'll have more kids apply for it. We have no grade point average or anything like that, there's a restriction or requirement. Uh, as long as they're going to any post-secondary, whether it's a trade school, a day at junior college, whatever it might be. Uh, the only thing they do have to do is they have to write. Um, a little essay, and we call it uh, how do you plan on living like Madden?
Oh, cute, I love that, that's awesome.
Madden was a very caring kid. Anyway, now they have to come up with a uh, a resume of something. That's the main thing we look at. Any questions?
Dick, is the foundation um formed as like a nonprofit?
It's a nonprofit.
And you said that the monies you get locally in Black Duck or stay in Black Duck or?
Originally, again, Madden was owning in Farmington. So that's where we started this along with uh the other side of the family, uh, lives in that area. And that's where he went to school, and my son is very active in the youth programs down there also, both athletic and the churches. And uh, so that's where we started it, and so we decided that along with our daughter, and stuff that we've been buying up here. And as long as we could raise some money up here, we would do it, we weren't gonna take money we took from down from down there. And bring it back up here in the same way, I mean, stuff we raised here, states, yes, it all goes into Black Duck School. Have the youth in the area depending on, it could be not necessarily be connected with uh the school, if somebody had a program, they had to go in and could apply for it. Any other questions?
Don't you wanna donate?
Well, I I should, those fighters, and that's our tournament this weekend, uh, Saturday. Uh, we also have a uh a full forge meal we're serving this year that is open to the public. We do appreciate if you are RSVP it, so we know what to plan for. Uh, so people are welcome to come out, uh, we also have what we call the duck race. Seriously, uh, what happens with that is the the ducks are sold, they're put in the in the river that goes through, so. There's no water in it, and last year we had duck draw, and I'm sure it'll be a duck draw again this year. And it's just split apart situation, last year, the person that wanted just donated their half way back to the foundation, so. But you're more than welcome to come out on Saturday if you want to meal drop for.
Next.
Or if you wanna buy some ducks.
Yeah. Um, since we figured out with our auditors preceding the meeting that as we're going to scholarships is um allowable. With the liquor rent fund, I would recommend that the council consider putting the money right to the scholarship. If they chose to. That part of the foundation, you know.
Okay, and this is, and like I said, this is a new one, so it's like, it's not like, I I mean, it's not on our typical.
Yeah, I know that.
In our budget.
I know Toys for Kids is planning on being here um at the work session. Um, you I guess you're not gonna see the mystery center after last year. Um, so to date, you know, you know, I gave Max a game.
Yeah, today we're at three thousand.
Yeah, so the budget, the budget set was six total, so you're you're. It's September, I think it's gonna be fine. You said you're doing a thousand dollar scholarship, Dick?
That's what we give you.
Thousand dollars?
Scholarship, I need for that.
If it's, I basically heard this within the budget, is that what I'm hearing?
I I believe so, yeah, I would say you're you're gonna be fine, especially with um Toys for Kids.
That's what we donated so far this year. I'm putting I'm putting a number on the table for discussion, guys, I'm not.
Motion to approve one thousand for scholarship. For the Madden McKean Foundation. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Then, all who's in favor? I, I. I.
Thank you.
Opposed? Very none, motion carries. I'm used to people telling them where to go.
There it is right there.
Okay. Okay, just so that I can set it up as a table.
Thank you guys, thank you so much, thank you so much, bless you, make it fun. Hey, um, Max, the next thing I need approval on is revision to Resolution twenty-five oh one. Um, as it was in the paper today and we noted last week, September twenty-seventh is gonna be the last publication of the Black Duck American. Um, it's required that the city designate um uh an official newspaper. And the next closest within the county is the Bemidji Pioneer, um, so I've adjusted that resolution and would um appreciate. Approval of that.
I will take more than that, but just wanna relate to that, we were talking earlier, and I understand you say Nick Sykes is not the vice mayor for this year.
He is.
He is, this is reflected in, I thought the earlier conversation was it wasn't last year.
It wasn't last year, they have the, I think you're right, I think what's in there.
Yeah.
Thing they have probably got it confused with this year.
Yeah.
Yes, Nick was uh taking over for an absent council member Lori.
That's correct.
This year, so.
Yeah.
That's correct, I just noticed that if we're doing. But I'll make a motion, we re- uh, approve Resolution twenty-five, twenty twenty-five oh one, revision number five. Reflecting the new newspaper has the Bemidji Pioneer. A motion and a second. All who's in favor? I, I oppose. Very none, motion carries, so I have to see it though.
Uh, the next item I have to approve is Resolution twenty-five sixteen, this is a resolution approving the assessment for past two utility charges.
Ron, you want this one?
Hey, the last one. Your motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixteen.
Thank you. And a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All who's in favor? I, opposed. Very none, motion carries.
Uh, item D is approving ordinance twenty-five oh three um amendments to the Lake to Lakeview Cemetery ordinance.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh three, the ordinance amending in chapter six of Lakeview Cemetery. Of the city code.
All second vote? Motion and a second. Any discussion on this one? No, we can't get Christina to read it again. All in favor?
I.
I, I opposed, very none, motion carries.
All right, um, item F for council con- E, sorry, bleh. Uh, council consideration is in ordinance um twenty-five oh four, amending chapter eleven. Um, section eleven seventy for cannabis business regulations, so. Um, from our conversation and our uh. Presentation we had from uh Novo Inc. Um, I have provided the council a formal request for um the support of being. Uh, interested in. Going into the Shade Star properties, uh, I have discussed with our partners at the county and our city attorney. That um an amendment to the ordinance would be necessary. Um, based upon the buffers, the recommended language is to um specify within the minimum buffer requirements. The type of business that would regulate those that those um buffers. So I have provided some recommended language, I've bounced it back to the attorney to look at, so. The biggest consideration, I think when OCM put out this platform of sample language was just. Operation of a business type, but not specifying what type. We've already done our due diligence, putting into the ordinance which zones. We're allowing the types of business to go into, um, it just so happens that when we adopted this ordinance. The Shade Star was still in business, right? Um, it also just happens to be that by county cap. Happens to be inside an industrial zone of which. Daycares, schools can be an entity going on inside the city, so. I don't think anyone foresaw what could have happened, but not to um. Tailor any changes to any specific type of business, we don't want to um omit any industry coming in. Um, I've talked to our partners at by county cap too, um, just to get their feedback on having the. Um, that start next door and how they feel about it and to chime in too, but. This would be my recommendation, um, I'd also explain that to our partners at Novo. Um, it sounds like a lot of the process is still very heavy moving forward though.
Yeah, when I saw this Christina, I thought this makes sense, this is the way to go, rather than individual resolution of our waiver.
Well.
Existing ordinance.
Yeah, and I really thought that that was an option based upon some of the language within that.
Yeah.
That section, and after I got some more feedback, they're like, no, you need to really weigh this out, so. Um, this is what the attorney and I came up with too.
That was my other question, where did the language come from, it sounds like it came from our attorney.
Yeah, yeah, um, we both kinda hashed some stuff out. Um, i- in in addition to that, the other, the other amendment on page two. Um, in section, um, in section one of administration. That language that states however, the city of Black Duck may adopt ordinances under section two point six, three and four. If Beltrami County has not um adopted conflicting provisions, is being recommended to be stricken out by the come by the county. Um, so that our ordinance doesn't conflict. So much so that down the line, we put the city into a conflict legally.
Yeah, so I think this is the way to go, rather than some type of uh waiver, like we were previously reading. And from reading. And from reading other minutes, I see that some. There's at least one opinion on the planning commission that there should be public involvement or information about this, and an ordinance would be. Perfect to take care of that concern, because there's two public readings.
Correct.
There's public meetings, so.
Correct, my, my hope, Ron, is that um. I can get this in the paper and do the first reading on September twenty second preceding work session, and then October sixth. The final and approval, which still kind of speeds things along for everybody and doesn't hold anybody up, I just wanna make sure that I. We've provided our due diligence to the, to the business owners, to the neighbors, to all the stakeholders within the city. And that the conversation has, has been very vibrant within the community that they know this is a potential. And that um, the fear maybe isn't that we're gonna have a retail business in town. But an industry.
Yeah, I think this, that would certainly take care of the public involvement concerns, of the ordinance readings and everything, so. I know the, you hear from Bycat.
Right, then head start draft.
That, yeah. Is there something you'd like to add to this conversation?
Well, I, I just, we just wanna support, I mean, we really, it'd be so great for the community, but it's in our location. But I did watch the eighteen, August eighteenth, um, work finding meeting in. I mean, it sounds like they just really wanna make sure that they're aware and they're not gonna get big sign, then there's not gonna be the smell, then, you know, I mean, we have. Children and families, and so we're a childcare program, um, early childcare, early childhood program, not. And not just a daycare, we're childcare and education, and so we work closely with the children and the parents and the families. Together, and so we have a lot of, uh, thirty two families that um, go in and out of our. House every day, so there's a lot of kiddos and a lot of babies and. Uh, children and families, probably, so we just really wanna make sure that we're supporting you, but we're also working together, so I think that I think. We're not against it at all, we just wanna make sure we're within the guidelines of Minnesota state licensing for our childcare license and then also the opposite. Head start for federal funding, so. What does your board feel about this?
Um, they are meeting this week.
They are.
And I'm meeting with my policy council for the uh, head start on tomorrow. But I don't foresee it comes, just maybe some questions.
One of the things I took away from their presentation was that uh, there would be next to no signage, it's not an advertised business, it's a wholesale. It's like a factory.
Yeah, that's right.
There wouldn't be anything distracting folks. Miscellaneous industrial thing in it, in the current legal environment, it's a totally legal and licensed and approved.
Exactly, if it was retail, I might have a different. But I mean, we, because liquor stores can't be close to children. Right, and the way that the ordinance was set originally with the zoning. Retail can't be in, in the just full zone, I believe is what we did, yeah, business one, two, or three, and that was it.
That's nice to be a part of, of knowing what's going on, yeah.
One concern I have is what your board's gonna say, you know, what they come up with.
I, I talked to Barbara Ann, who's our media, and she's like, the same, same opinion, you know, it's a great, it's great for the community and. Supports families and children that we serve, um, if there's new jobs and then well-paying jobs and. You know, we're, that is part families work, they're way out of poverty, so. I, I don't think it'll be any.
Yeah, I think the ordinance is the way to go, like I've said before, we're. Municipality of Black Duck has been kind of decaying and collapsing, and that's often, we have a huge facility out there with, with. It's gonna, that's gonna happen to it unless we can repurpose this, and this does sound like a excellent way to do that and keep it maintained and on the tax rules. And people employed, and it's conceivable that your operation will have additional customers.
If they can qualify, yeah, they're eligible, but we'll see.
Move forward, guys?
Hundred percent.
Budget highlights, um. Just gonna put it up on the screen, but don't have a ton to talk about. The finance committee met again um, last week. We made a couple of changes. To the overall levy, um, that included. The health insurance premium that was uh, provided for the city to consider tonight. It's an eighteen percent increase over twenty five. The finance committee discussed uh, going to a higher deductible, um, of which would be funded. Mostly by the city anyway, um, not lowering the monthly premium, so it would have an adverse effect on the levy. If we went in that route, so the finance committee agreed to move forward with the premium of eight forty three seventy two with the same deductible. Um, and then the other thing I factored into the budgets was um, paid leave. For the recommended, um, that the employer do a hundred percent of that point eight eight percent, so that's factored into these budgets as well. Um, you're still at a decrease of seven thousand forty two dollars over two thousand twenty five at this time. The annual budget meeting of the fire protection area approved the fire budget on the twenty second of August. Since this group met last, I have special revenue and enterprise fund budget meetings tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday. And then one more finance meeting the following Wednesday after that, so the seventeenth, so prior to the council's. Special meeting and um, work session. I'll have more information, but as it sits right now, this is kind of what I proposed for the levy to the finance committee. Where you guys tonight?
Did you get that email about the library?
Tonight, I did.
So, if, before you guys on the finance committee figure this out, we got, we're gonna cut forty percent possibly from our library system. But we need to contact our representative, so. That really, that would hurt, it hurt our library.
That would hit. I mean, the way I've got the library budget factored right now, it would be a hundred percent supported their ask.
Is that for the email today?
Yep. I don't know what changed, I mean, there, if it changes, our numbers are not done, I can't speak to that, but. Current levy ask was. Due to twenty thousand nine ninety five, and I have that fully factored into their budget for twenty six.
I'm just bringing it up because I was shocked when I got.
Yeah, and I mean, I, I get it, I mean, they're doing their due diligence at the county level too, this happened last year also. They had huge out, they had huge support. They ended up porting it anyway. If the county didn't. Fully fund the careless ask, it would trickle down to the cities to help fund part of it. Or it would have an adverse effect on when they're open and operating. We can't, we can only, we can only control commissioners by talking to them as, as taxpayers at this point, so. We still have two weeks now to approve your preliminary levy. So, I imagine more will come out at the county level before then.
I just brought it up.
Yep. Anybody else had any other questions or concerns on where I'm at right now, where we're at right now?
No, I think your comment on the insurance premium, the way to handle it is the right way to go.
Yeah.
Certainly, everybody who has insurance gets higher bills.
I, I have a really hard time believing that the league's guidance is to, that there's not gonna be any increases for workers comp. So, um.
We did put an increase in, though.
I'm sorry, what? Yes, yes, I did, yes, um, and we can back that down by December. If there's more guidance before then, uh, we just can't add it, so. I'd rather, I'd rather considerable ten percent increase for work comp than decrease it, because work comp. Tends to be the highest.
They haven't had any other.
Not yet, not that I've seen that. No. Yeah, there wasn't even anything in there. Monday email today, so. What I can do is look through some other cities, see what they're planning that are covered. It might give us more guidance, but anywhere from ten on up has been kind of what we've been budgeting the last five years. And wages drive that a lot, so it's really hard for us to expect. It not to go up, but the other part that drives our work comp premium is also our incidents. You know, slips, falls, work comp issues, um, we haven't had anything real major in a couple of years, so the amount of. Increases shouldn't happen.
I don't know if it's one of those, if you do or if you don't.
Well, and I, I've seen a substantial plateau on, um. The work comp premium for the police department this year over last year's increase from twenty three. And fire department too, um, one of the things the league stopped doing was all the way up until twenty five. They required, they had two separate premiums, one for police and fire departments. That had ninety percent um, or less of their staff or volunteers. Be smokers or tobacco users, and if you didn't hit that ninety percent threshold, your premium was higher. And they stopped doing that um, this year, so I, I think some of the changes.
Started charging everybody higher premium.
I think, I, I don't, I don't know how they figured it out, but that was, that was always a requirement for both of our departments to. You know, sign an affidavit saying, yes, I am, or no, I'm not.
Right, I remember.
And that was not, that was not required for twenty five, twenty six policy. So, maybe they figured out some stuff that isn't needed, I don't know. But this is kind of where I'm sitting at this point, so I'm just kind of giving you guys an update. I do plan on having the public notice in the paper, um, to adopt the preliminary levy also on. September twenty second. That's three meetings now that night. Gonna figure out which comes first. Um, the last item for council discussion, possible action is. I need some guidance on the city hall, um, renovation project funding. I presented in the revolving loan fund committee two weeks ago. When the golf course equipment came up. As doing an internal loan from uh, the two fifty account for the golf equipment and then. Brought the committee up to speed in terms of the city hall. Half of the committee was dead set against the guidance that has been provided. To make the uh. Funding with Beltrami Electric and R D. Go forward. At this time, I have provided the finance committee the same feedback. And it does not sound like I'm getting the go ahead from half of the council to. Move forward with this project. What I'm gonna ask the council tonight is for a final decision on. This project so that I can give our partners of Beltrami Electric and R D a final yes or no. Because half of the final paperwork for the R D um, loan has been signed, reviewed. Approved and consent agendas given to Beltrami Electric. And if the city does not wish to move forward with this project, I need to draft a formal letter stating that. At this time, the city does not wish to move forward with this project as it was applied for.
So unless I misunderstood something, but I believe the sole reason we applied for the grant that this veteran about primary electric was to help with city hall. Was there another purpose for it that I'm missing? So why would we be changing direction at this point, it's something I don't.
Because another committee, they really shouldn't use ours. Revolving loan fund to cover the expenses of it.
And there was negative feedback about um, the path at which the city has decided. To take on the facility itself. Half of, part of the committee would rather see the city not. Um, put money into a building that's almost a hundred years old, but potentially maybe build a new one instead. So now I'm getting conflicting guidance. Regardless, if the city were to move forward with the project, Ron. The, the money owed to Beltrami Electric, let's say, none of this has ever happened, the city would be levying the debt. To Beltrami Electric for ten years. Um, at zero percent, so basically a thirty year, a thirty thousand dollar debt payment. Previewing the next ten years, assuming the debt would start in twenty seven. As it sits right now, the way the debt schedule is, it wouldn't put a huge. Would put a huge damper increase on the debt obligation to the city and the levy, the problem is is. We're facing some very potential large infrastructure changes in the next five to six years. Which will also be debt to the city. And the finance committee is questioning if it's the right debt the city should move forward with. Knowing that the infrastructure is probably something that should be. Taken care of first. Is that a good summary of it? The other, the only other option the city may do to levy for a city hall. Or another facility, a capital improvement plant, a capital improvement project, would be to put it to a referendum. The reason. I was recommended to go through Beltrami Electric and R D was that we've already put all our eggs in one bucket. With another capital improvement project for another facility, so we've used up what we can do for that type of debt. If the council wanted to continue moving forward and omit the R D portion. Pathway, you'd have to put it to a vote of the. Constituents if they wanted to, but levy for it. Either way, you're gonna be levying the debt, whether you want, the one way to see if everybody's okay with doing that for city hall or. Going the other path that we've already completed. Well, I've already done through one, so I, I know that too.
Oh, no, I, I would agree with the, the finance committee. That it's the wrong path. And then we kind of jumped the gun, I don't think we got all of our options. I see reprinted some Black Duck American, only John Toss. Opened the, the new bank building here, and I believe it was nineteen fifty seven, so it's not quite a hundred years old. There was an older building that was demolished on the site. Roof needs to be fixed, and the sewer's backing up from the adjoining property because it's tied into the demolished building, so. I think those are the first two. Highest priority things to do with the building, and everything else is really optional. The old city hall, the roof was uh, neglected for probably fifty years. To the point where the second floor was unusable and we. To the point where the second floor was unusable and we had to demolish that. Beautiful building, just we called the opera house pictures in your office, so. Certainly wouldn't want to be charged with neglect and uh have to demolish this building to the council not taking action, so. My opinion is if we've pursued the grant with Beltran Electric for that purpose, we should.
Well, the grant is towards Beltran Electric, the debt is to us. Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure the language was clarified. The only other option that the city could do um would be pick part of the, part of the repairs. And levy for that expected expense in the following year. Put it into your operating budget and get it done. Expect that to be there um. But. I mean, yeah.
I mean, if you were gonna hold a vote right now. I vote no.
Ever in the L B A building. Uh, it would be especially with all the other repairs that are coming up, I say we would need to keep this building. Functional and reserved. By the time you demo this building, build a new building, you're asking way more of the taxpayers than what happening right now.
Wait another half a decade, decade, problems can be. They're not, extremely rich community, we don't have a huge budget to go on. Say, hey, let's go build another city hall, it's not.
One of the things that was brought up in a financial revolving loan fund. Is that the right use of the revolving loan fund?
They did that for the golf course, I remember.
Yeah, they've done it for multiple others things in the past.
Yeah.
And I don't see. Putting money into something that's.
Or another business wants to come through and. Use their revolving loan fund that we completely depleted. I, I. As I said, I, I don't know the answers, I'm. Perhaps our engineer.
It doesn't know about funding, but Nick brought up a good point, uh it's gonna cost you substantially more to build.
And if building a new building requires a referendum or something, uh I don't wanna put mine in. It's like, I'll tell you right now, it's not gonna get approved by the voters. You know, our city is constricting. We have an current opportunity for a business as we discussed earlier, but. We should do everything we can to maintain the city, it's, you know. Since the highway bypassed it nineteen seventy-seven, it's gone downhill. Decayed and uh I think we need to at least preserve the roof and the sewer or.
Foundation.
That's what, you know, what we originally applied for this for, so. Don.
I'm kind of up in the air on this, you know, after reading um what the. Their committee wrote and everything on both of their, both the things they read about it. Now, they're the, they're the financial people and telling, you know, so being the know. What's going on, um. Me, yeah, he depicts this building, but I don't. Like you say, you don't wanna. Keep bleeding hard. Revolving loan fund either. You, you know. Either way, we're gonna be spending money. You know?
Either whether it's spread over time or. And to our overall taxes going up even higher, so. There is no good answer, but there is something that's gotta be done.
You know, if this.
We, we need, yeah, I mean.
If this new business comes in town and it. Creates all these jobs and all this stuff, um. Could be a game changer for this town. But until we really honestly know.
And it's not gonna happen overnight with this, if they get here, it's gonna be a process.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be, it's gonna be next year, oh, look at all this, no. In a few years, a year, making.
It's.
They even said that.
Everything we've heard about that business at these meetings has been one thing so far, all talk. We've heard a couple of different options from our prior friends, Scott Peterson, and things like that, nothing's happened, so hopefully this will happen, but. It's all talk at this point.
Sewer.
Don't, doesn't have to end like they don't.
Yeah.
Still.
I'm not prepared to make caution on it, so. Somebody else wants to. So what are you looking for with the sign on Monday, John, but Christian.
Are you scrapping this project or not? That's what I'm asking.
Well, I'm certainly not scrapping, so.
I, I need, I need guidance, I spent a year working on, um, you know. Getting a, a business plan and everything together to help Beltran Electric apply for this through RD with the um. In the focal points that uh D M B inside this building has generated traffic inside this community. And um has had, you know, extra fringe money come into town. Um, that it has a potential for increasing full-time equivalents. Um, and that was basically the application because that's pretty much what you have to do if you were a applicant for a revolving loan fund. Um, uh, loan. Um. I think that's one of the biggest reasons it got approved, plus the fact that the council was okay with um putting in some money of their own. And um, and. RD approved it, so. If the city is not comfortable moving forward, then please make it known. Because I don't wanna spend any more of my efforts and my time into a project that's not gonna go forward at this time. I have a lot of other things that I can be doing. And Troy and Chris said that tonight, I got a lot of stuff going on for the next five, I have to work on too. So if you're done, just please say it, if you're not. Then say that too, but just please give me some guidance that's solid.
Now, correct my understanding, this, the grant through Beltran Electric is approved.
The, the, yes, so RD, we are the, the ultimate recipient, Ron, so. RD gives for Beltran Electric three hundred thousand dollars of which they loan to the city. Okay, so the city would levy the debt to repay that at zero percent for ten years. Ninety-nine thousand dollars is also money that the city has to put up. And in the. Um, in the letter of conditions, that's noted because we agreed, the city agreed to it in resolution format last year. So it's just shy of four hundred thousand dollar commitment.
So we put up ninety-nine and the, the grant.
And they loan us three hundred, right?
But again, it's, that's going to happen, it's not like we have to apply and there's a decision-making process.
It's approved.
It's approved.
Yeah, I'm in, we're in the final hundred and twenty days of getting the process of it open. Yeah. But as I stated earlier, the debt would need to be levied, what I presented to the R L F committee. Um, subsequently in email format was. Um. The intention was for the ninety-nine to be paid back. With levied funds to the R L F fund and that the three hundred would be levied to um pay back Beltran Electric. And it, I mean, if I painted an incorrect picture for this board in the last years, please say so. But it was never my intention to take money from the R L F fund and not pay it back. That's absurd. The golf course isn't even doing that. So why would any other fund in the city not do that? But I understand the R L F fund board's concern is they see it as a conflict with the city loaning itself funding.
Well, I think this is the nicest building we, we'll ever have, it's a brick building, it's a very solid. And I remember traveling back here one time during the forty-plus years I lived away and saw. A sign on the old public works building, which is a rusty sheet metal building, and it said, city hall, black duck. And I thought, are you kidding me? They moved city hall to the public works building, so. So I think this is uh the way to go, maintain this building and proceed as we originally intended to do. Grant or pardon me, the, the grant amount and uh coming up with our money. Proceed with the black duck city hall renovation project funding through the Beltran Electric and World Development. Partnership, which grant was already approved. As we previously decided as a council and made a resolution to that effect, uh twenty twenty-four eighteen. And will that we continue on that project as intended and not uh stop it at this point.
Hang on a second, Ben.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this?
Roll combo.
You don't get to request that.
Sorry. Oh, it's not, sorry.
We, we could. Vote Iron A slogan.
I'm pretty sure I can tell.
But, yeah, you guys heard my, my thoughts on it, I'm just. Changing my mind, I don't feel comfortable with it, I don't like the idea. I think, we, I think we did jump the gun, I think we missed getting some estimates to see what it would cost new. I, I just feel like it's a very expensive. But that, that is my, both of my thoughts. I'll call for any further discussion. Or it gets more expensive to repair, but. This is their only option if we wanna keep the city hall structurally sound, I think.
That's uh exactly what happened to the old city hall. I remember going up onto the second floor and seeing the floorboards, hardwood floorboards rotted and twisted up because of water was just allowed to. Leak in and even as a boy, I thought, why did they let this happen? Why did they let this? I couldn't believe it. Second floor was totally unusable, it had a stage up there and um. Wall was just rotten, they put a suspended ceiling, two by four grid with fluorescent lights in the room, the city council met it because the ceiling was all discolored and molded. They would have to look at it during the meetings. Well. If there's no further discussion, I'll, I'll call for the vote.
Aye, aye.
No.
September seventeenth. Uh, finance committee meeting is September seventeen. Uh, special meeting.
I'll call right now.
Thank you.
For September twenty-second.
Work sessions also this twenty-second and October sixth is the next regular council meeting, and then of course I'll add the. Um, public reading of the audience you guys uh agreed to move forward with or um. Whatever chapter it is, chapter eleven. Yeah, that's it. And we're having questions for me.
Mike.
Yes, sir.
You didn't tell everybody in your report about this great letter.
I forgot about it, I'm not used to getting those. I'm used to getting them at all, you guys know, we went down, tried to help out down there.
It's nice to be recognized.
It, it was nice, my guys actually were really taken back by it, that their names were actually specifically in a letter, so. It, it was nice, we're, we're happy to know it was appreciated.
Good.
I think they're doing a huge fundraiser too, I guess the United Way is partnering with them so that they can raise enough money to finish it up. I saw something in the paper about it.
Just went by Saturday night and it looks pretty much all done.
Most I got.
Somebody must finally.
Copped up some money and some manpower, yeah. That's good.
Uh, anybody have anything else?
How are we gonna, where are we moving forward for getting this building repaired or something? I think that's a discussion, we either have a work session or there's something that's gotta be done, because.
We'll give it on the next work session agenda.
And probably a finance meeting, gotta talk more about that, we're gonna do. On mark. Taxes up higher for everybody, so.
We'll recover them. They're already well, well aware of what's going on.
Push them to adjourn. All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All of it. All's. Thank you, guys.